May 24, 2022. A rise beneath the general allegiance followed by a ended moment of silence for the of the taxes.
We would be the United States of America into the Republic for which is saints, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us to item four point one proclamation. So our first one is a proclamation recognizing Angela Luba for 2022 night and day award excellence in nursing. So proclamation recognize Angela Luba for the 2023 night and day award for excellence in nursing. Whereas Angela Luba has been recognized being a local recipient of the 2022 Night Gale Award for Excellence in Nursing. And whereas lost my place for a second there we go. Whereas named after nurse pioneer Florence Night Gale, the Night Gale Award is the highest international distinction a nurse can achieve and is awarded to nurses or nursing aides for exceptional courage and devotion to wounded, sick, or disabled who work to civilian victims of a conflict or disaster, or exemplary service or a creative and pioneering spirit in the areas of public health or nursing education. And whereas at the Hartford Hospital, Angela worked as part of the complex case commitment team, CCMT, and trauma nurse navigator, dealing with most challenging cases that require extraordinary and dedicated attention, as well as spearheaded several pilot programs that led to program and system wide changes in the Hartford healthcare system. And whereas in her various roles in the CCMT as and as trauma nurse navigator, Angela cared for patients and their families at the most difficult time of their life. They've gone through tragic and traumatic situations, placing their patients' care first and providing them the care and personal attention that went above and beyond the normal expectations of nursing, resulting in remarkable outcomes in their recovery, exemplifying the exemplary services and creative move by the Night Gale Award. Now therefore I now therefore be resolved that I, Steve Jones, Chair of the Town, Town Council, on behalf of the Town Council, congratulate Angela Luba for receiving, uh, receiving the 2022 Night Gale Award. Day to town in Connecticut, it's 24th day of May, 2022. So congratulations.
This right?
Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you all for, for support.
So four point two, we have a proclamation recognizing June as LGBTQ plus pride month. Whereas the town town is a welcoming, inclusive community and exceptional place to live, work, and all kinds. And whereas the town town recognizes the importance of equality and freedom for all. And whereas the United States is founded upon and continue and continues to strive towards embodying principles that include every person being treated equal, that everyone is guaranteed rights to their life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. And whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender, and queer plus net neighbors who work, live, and raise families here are an integral part of town's population. And whereas the town town is dedicated to fostering acceptance of all citizens and working to embrace acceptance and work towards stopping prejudices wherever they exist. And whereas town town acknowledges the need for education, awareness, and understanding are still needed to end the prejudice discrimination in the nation. Whereas and whereas town town celebrates the diversity of its people and the right to live their truest, most authentic lives, free of discrimination, fear, and prejudice. And whereas it is vital, our youngest residents, regardless of their sexual orientation or gender identity, feel seen, safe, and supported and empowered by their peers, engineers, and community leaders. And whereas town is proud to support and protect the civil rights of the LGBTQ plus community. And now therefore the town, town council, we have, since proclaimed June 2022 as LGBTQ plus pride month. And witness where I'm here to set my hand and cause the seal of town town to be fixed on this May 24, 2022. Here now at item five, public petitions, communications, and public participation. Any subject in the jurisdiction of the town council with a two minute limit. If you are on Zoom, there is the raise hand function. Otherwise, if you are in the public, you can approach the table here. Why don't you go first since you're here, here in your line? And then just to the record, state your name and address.
Okay. My name is Charles Williams. I'm at 53 Ryan Road in town. So I just wanted to speak on the pride month in your proclamation and thank you as council for recognizing this. Sometimes as it just an all white straight guy, it's easy for me to take things like this for granted. But I found as a retired, but as a pastor and a former prison chaplain, pastor for over 30 years. But this is really an issue that affects people's lives very deeply. And sometimes when it doesn't affect us or our family personally, it's easy to forget about some of these issues and this particular issue is, doesn't just affect the quality of life, which is important, but sometimes can be a life and death issue for young folks. For less than or older than young folks also, but especially young folks. I have as a pastor done counseling with moms whose child was killed in one instance on over a creek bank, also in Bangor, Maine, and the the teenagers who did it were almost lifted up as heroes in the community. This was in the late eighties. And the grief of that mom over the years, you know, I saw a few times every year when we would have different events in Bangor and we couldn't help but get, you know, right to the core of you as a parent. You know, my son died when he was 21 and you never recover from that. You may saw on the news, the mass shooting in Texas, you know, just earlier today. And here's so far as you know, 14 more young people and their families, plus the teacher and that teacher's families going through this lifetime of grief. So what we do when we do something positive for our youth is so much more than often we think of. When I was a pastor in Hartford, I had this young 15 year old boy would come to my church and he lived just, just down the road, less than a block. And he really only ran across me by accident. His grandmother used to bring him to church. And all the way to church, she would tell him how he was going to hell. So he had had multiple suicide attempts by this point, you know, at 15. And his dad was beside himself. Not sure, you know, where mom was, but dad was beside himself, did not help his son. And he had missed church with his grandma one day, came to my church and, and he thought I was joking when I wasn't judgmental telling him all these negative things that he had grown to believe. And, you know, a few months or, or a year of time with a, a young person like that doesn't offset a lifetime what he'd been told. So he was hospitalized a few more times, a few more times after that. Still alive to the best of my knowledge, thank God. But what we're doing, you know, when we put that little flag in our yard and, and we show support for our neighbors. Sometimes we think, you know, it doesn't concern me, you know, what, you know, why, why get involved? But it does really concern us. These are just oftentimes young folks who they don't know who to look up to or what to believe. And, and of course we'll believe, you know, those who are in positions of authority. And one of the things, I'm a fairly new, very new member of our local prevention council here in town. And then for being here who invited me to be a part of this, but one of the things we discovered in our council and some of our research is that 42% of the LGBTQ youth seriously considered attempting suicide just in the past year, 42%. That's a big number. 72% reported symptoms of generalized anxiety disorder just in the last two weeks. And I don't know if you as adults experience anxiety, I do, it gets the best of me some days. You think being retired, I'd be like past all that. I swear it's worse now for me and I try to make sense of it, but you can't. And how's a kid? I'm 60. How's a kid make sense of that anxiety? Nearly half of these youths have wanted counseling from mental health professional. And it's so hard for them to even to get this counseling. 70% stated their mental health was poor, most of the time or always during COVID-19. And again, I don't know how COVID has been for you. For me, it has been a struggle when I was working. I was glad I could go to the office every day. But you've seen, you know, on the news, lots of towns, even in Connecticut have been in the news. And I, I can't look at the times, just tell me when I'm running short.
As you were on her pulse.
Oh, but you know, the, the youth just aren't getting these counseling opportunities that they so desperately need. So we just, you know, as our local prevention council, I want to thank you and I personally want to thank you. And I know as like passed out flags through the town here, so many people have said, thank you for supporting this. So.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public? If you're on Zoom, you can hit the raise hand function. I see Jacob Mari.
Am I good to go?
You are good to go.
Okay, thank you. Jacob Mari, 32, Stewart Drive. I'd like to just talk a bit about the items on the agenda relating to the Miracle Field Project tonight. I would like to have the record reflected in speaking as a member of the public. I think that the current proposal has, leaves me with a number of concerns. I think that under ideal circumstances, having this field would be very beneficial to everyone. But I really do feel that the council needs to make sure, really, really make sure that the Miracle League organization is able to pay for its upkeep and replacement costs as outlined in the MOU that we received a copy of. The field is a very expensive facility that will need to be replaced frequently. And if the MLNCT can't come up with the funds on its own, the town, the town will be on the hook for its replacement costs. I, this isn't just speculation. If we look at what's going on with the high school turf field, we're in a very similar bind there, which also came with the best intentions and promises, but unfortunately it was never able to pay for itself either. And I'm very concerned that we may end up in a very similar situation with the Miracle League field if the proper steps are not taken. Once again, I think that the intent is very noble and that it would be very nice to have. But I really do feel that this needs to be addressed first. And I, I think that the current process with a planned vote, a vote tonight seems a bit rushed and, and things need to be a little bit better. Thank you.
If you did, any other members of the public, and if you'd like to speak, it can be raised hand function or if you're a mobile device, you can start. Going once. Twice. All right, we will move on. Item six, public hearings, which there are none. So seven, eight, courts and committees responsible to the council. Katie, is there any?
No, but there will be in our.
And then seven. Liaisons, Katie, you're okay. I'll start with you.
Yes, there was a historic district commission meeting, which I missed because we were the, it was the night of the town meeting.
Yeah. That's a good idea. Okay, sharing again. All right, I have a few unfortunate things to mention some of those. There is the conservation commission on May 12. The main note is the Palmer family is interested in donating some land to the town or potentially selling property of the town. So the land acquisition advisory committee is planning to meet in early June. I think regarding those, the commission is also looking to possibly pursue a state D. Osmond Grant for, for the purchase. After that, the water commission met last night. They had some discussions regarding there's some well related issues while one has a problem with which rest. Running regarding pH limits and whether they're looking to up the infrastructure, reading correctly in the minutes. But otherwise, I think the financials were the kind of it's lower because of the COVID year, it's kind of tanks downwards. But they expect to have a pretty level year financially. Then this Thursday, the conservation commission will be meeting Thursday. They are going to be talking about the additional poll kill sign installation. They do have vacancies on the conservation commission, which is a manager appointed position. So I think they're looking to try and advertise those vacancies. Otherwise, it, it mean.
I think, Mr. Chair, that I was not able to attend the Veterans Recognition Commission meeting because of our town council, I mean, our town manager interviews. But I did have an opportunity to review the minutes and did have an opportunity to participate in a function that we had this past weekend over at the military museum where there was a military car show. We had several trucks and, and other military items that were there that the museum was open. There was a great function that we actually had an opportunity to meet, meet up with a, a number of local veterans, inform them of the VRC and things that were going on. And that was also discussion at the meeting, which I was familiar with before, but also review the minutes and that there is a book to start a veterans coffee house, similar to what other communities have, but this would operate as a 501(c)(3). So that it would be give the VRC an ability to, to raise funds outside of what, outside of town funding that with the, one of the specific intents being to use towards a a veterans wall and that there was a discussion of possibly locating a wall over by Crandall Park, over by the gazebo there. Again, this is in the very early phases of discussion, but I know that, that Ms. Hancock and, and Mr. Maynard had been in discussions and just real sort of just high level discussions and ideas to see if it's something that would be a feasible possibility. And that from there, they will, they're going to look at the granularity of it. So.
Thank you. This was over, the gazebo over near, I think, the Lions Field.
Yeah, correct, correct.
Thank you.
So I'm just really down for our, we have a special committee meeting on May 17. These are in Miracle Field. Agenda, so I won't go too much into it, but I've seen a lot of things on social media. I just think I want to say some of the things we are working on that have big capital items to help reduce debt. It's not just this. This is the reason that we can potentially use the money that we did discuss that went through unanimously with a Democrat, Republican, and our interim town manager. So these are some things that Tammy, Lisa, and I have been working on ours through the back on the sweeper was approved. So that we moved about $900,000 off the capital debt last year. Currently we have, we are talking about it, hasn't been brought to the council yet. I'm just letting people know. So we've got a fire truck on there and ambulance. We've done the water study for the wells. Mental health is on there. We do, if people put in requests, like we just got one from the town league, little league of two pages of requests. Town and soccer as well, which I think that that's important. We should be maintaining that fields and looking into it. So I think those are great things to look at. And I think we got another one from a business owner a month ago. Yeah. And then Tammy is also looking into possible free sports during summer program. So we have a list. It's vetted, it's talked about monthly. Our grant person Leslie really digs deep into what follows into those guidelines. So I don't know, Lisa, if you want to clarify some, any misunderstanding that might be out there in the public.
Sure. The, the comprehensive list, our meeting, our second meeting that we were planning this month has been canceled. But in June, it'll pick up again and we'll probably go through exactly what's on the list, what's eligible to stay, what you might want to bring forward as a committee, subcommittee to the council. But certainly, yes, I've, I've seen a lot of things on social media as well. And there's some misconceptions saying that there's illegal use of the money. And that's certainly not the case because we vetted everything, we went through CCM. We read the treasury rules. We are going under the option of the revenue loss recognition option. We took that since we were under $10 million, we took that as the option. So a lot of the things that we do as public service, such as capital needs, capital infrastructure, things like that, that's all considered as part of public service. And providing recreation to the community, recreational sites is all still part of what public service does. So it is approved. Certain things are approved under that ruling that we went under.
Can we do, I just want to add, I'm going to cut you off, Lisa.
No, that's fine.
So I don't know, being up there, we were awarded $4.2 million from the federal. This isn't going to be coming out of technically your tax money because it's federal. But this isn't, anything we do is not going to increase your mill rate, your taxes, you're not going to see something. So I don't know. I just wanted to put that out there and we do have a running list. Lisa does a great job of how much is there and how much we'll use it and it's a tracker. So it's, I just want to, I'm just trying to make it clear to even the council and to others out there. Cause you know, nothing's worse than miscommunication or just rumors.
Now, some, some of the things that you have already approved have certainly reduced the impact on the mill rate going forward without us having to issue debt for those items. And there's certainly quite a few more on the list that will be coming forward once we get through the discussions, which will again help reduce the impact of the citizens as a whole. And that's kind of the route that the subcommittee is taking to try to provide something that's going to overall meet the needs of the community.
So I just wanted to get that up there, like get it off my mind. And we did cancel our regular meetings because we had a subcommittee. So that's all.
Okay. Other words.
Tended the board of education. Actually, I did attend the board of education meeting last night, a couple of weeks ago. I had attended as well and not getting too much what they talked about last night. I think what they talked about was a great conversation, what I could hear. For some reason I was having trouble with the links, but I figured we'd be talking about what Dr. Will and the board had sent to us. I would think that we should talk for a little bit because they are a stakeholder in the process.
Move on to eight point one, new business, the general budget discussion and consideration of a resolution to establish the I think this is pretty straightforward, but see the budget pass the second referendum. So I would entertain a motion to approve the draft resolutions outlined in eight point one. Go with Councilmember Murray. Is there a second?
A second.
Second, right, Councilor Luba? Yes.
Thank you for putting all this together, Lisa. I just wanted to make sure during our budget discussions, we knew that this vote was coming up and had reminded us that one of the reasons we don't set the mill rate at referendum is because there could be adjustments based on revenue. I'm assuming that based on all this information you gave us, that there needs to be no adjustment based on revenue changes. But I just wanted to make sure we put that on the record.
Yep, no, everything is, is fine as to the balance presented.
Awesome. Well, thank you and to the town staff for doing such a good job getting that all together for us. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, there's unanimous. So eight point two, we have a consideration of a resolution authorizing a positive use of the public revenues towards catch basin street sweeping free disposal costs under Public Act 21-58. So if you want to get a quick summary, because I know we previously were considering using the funds towards the back dollar street sweeper, but obviously those are purchased.
Right. So under the new legislation that was passed effective October 1, 2021, the little nip bottles that are sold in the liquor stores, the manufacturers or the producers are required to provide a a revenue towards the town for each of those units sold within the town. So we're estimating around almost $21,000 in revenue. We've received about $7,150 so far. Basically, excuse me.
Did you hear that?
Um, thank you. And, and it's based on are sold to each of the liquor stores. With this in mind, there's, there's limited uses for for the funds and some of them are for used in litter costs that creates solid waste. So the impact of that, the hiring of recycling coordinator, installation of storm drain filters designed to block solid waste and beverage containers. Of course, a purchase of a sweeper or vacuum, but we have the ARPA funds that we've used for that. And litter rinks are just beverage containers to, to try to clean all that up. With these new pieces of equipment that we will be getting in order to clean the storm drains, there's also going to be associated cost of disposing of the, the trash that would impact the budget if we were to put it in there. So what we're recommending is to use those revenues in, in a separate fund allocated solely for the disposal of the trash that will come from the street sweeper and the the backlog that cleans the storm drains, which is a permitted use under the legislation. So what we're asking for tonight is to be able to account for those revenues and use the expenditures in that case for those things.
Okay. And we didn't go for the recycling court here. I think we talked about before. It's because we would not get enough revenue to maintain a position like that.
You know.
Compared to like cities or larger towns. And then I think what was it for the like filters for the drains? We, I think we can opt for that because town is just so spread out and like cities and more condensed areas. It made more sense to use that for that purpose. Thank you. Are there any questions from councilmembers?
Yeah. Or does this authorization just authorize the money received to date? Or is this an extended authorization?
For the entire for all of it, for going forward, it'll be segregated in a separate account, separate fund where the revenue would come into that fund and the expenditures associated would come out of that fund. But that's all it could be used for.
Okay. Okay. So this takes effect upon passage and is in, in effect until we take it away, I guess. Okay. And are acting that the and will meet the disposal costs or?
We will have to see what comes in. We'll be monitoring it closely and hoping we could do anything to not impact the budget.
Sure, of course. You do a great job of that. Thank you. If if the revenue exceeds the expenses, can we kind of put a bookmark in to reevaluate that in two years or something like that?
Certainly.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's a good question. I think obviously, but all of that could also end up being expanded and they could say, well, people can only use it for these few purposes. They could provide funds that we had to do more things with it. So it'd be good to keep a regular review of it. Are there any other questions? See, and I'm just in a motion to approve the draft or the resolution as outlined in eight point two. So moved, so my Councilor Luba, is there a second?
Second.
Seconds.
That's okay.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, take them by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that is unanimous. We are on to eight point three, which is the consideration for resolution to approve the use of up to $200,000 of ARPA funds for Miracle Field site preparation.
And if you don't mind, I'd like to read what I wrote here because there, it does also offer some clarification on a lot of things that I've, I've seen on social media. So I've tried to make sure that I've addressed some of that so that at least the public is aware.
Yeah.
The ARPA subcommittee met on May 17, 2021. The ARPA subcommittee met on May seventeen, two thousand twenty two to discuss potential use of ARPA funds for site preparation work for the Miracle Field. When the Miracle League proposed the project and stated that the construction would be completely funded by their organization, the location was the original soccer fields at Birch Grove School. That site was already a prepared site for the base that is required and did not require much preparation work for the field to be constructed. There were several concerns raised by various sports groups regarding the reduction in the number of soccer fields that would occur by utilizing this location. Council requested a review of all alternate sites to determine in order to accommodate all the concerns. The alternate locations have increased the cost to prepare the locations for the Miracle Field or to relocate other fields. These were costs that the Miracle League could not incur. Some town council members would like to see the Miracle Field in town. The interim town manager was asked if there was a way to possibly fund the preparation cost of an alternate location. The interim town manager stated that she could not support, I stated that I could not support the recommendation for the use of tax dollars or bonding for that purpose as it would have an impact on the citizens. It was then requested that town council refer it to the ARPA subcommittee for consideration. The current location that is being discussed is site number eight under David Garrett's proposal located at the Birch Grove School across from the soccer fields. This was the secondary area that had been discussed on May fifth twenty two council meeting. When the cross farms location was reviewed by town staff and the Miracle League, it was determined that the site would not be feasible due to the slope, the wetland area and the cost to move the sheds, the irrigation and everything associated with it. It would have been much more costly to use that site versus the recommended site at the Birch Grove School, which you all had discussed as another alternate site. The ARPA subcommittee approved moving the funding request to the town council for consideration of up to two hundred thousand dollars. So that's what this resolution is asking for your consideration and discussion to be able to authorize if the Miracle League does come into town, it would certainly be contingent upon the execution of a contract between the town and the Miracle League. But approval of that this evening would at least show good faith that it is something that the council is supporting or if you're not. Certainly up to how each and every one of you feel about it. And so that's what we're asking for this evening.
Thank you. So, I know any questions immediately, I'll open the floor to any questions from council members. Counselor Murray, and then, I assure you.
I know that we received a communication through you from Dr. Willitt, on behalf of the Board of Ed, can we make sure that that gets included in the meeting packet or the meeting at the minute?
Yes.
Thank you. Just to for, to ensure that I am one hundred percent clear. This is an allowed use of those ARPA monies. Okay. And would this involve a blank check being written to the Miracle Field? So the mechanics of this would be the town would pay directly using ARPA funds?
Yes, I'm still working that out with our attorney as to how we need to move forward with that. Because there's certain laws that govern how the funds are spent, how it must be accounted for, how it must be reported to the federal treasury. And we're on top of all that for what we've done so far. So yes, this this piece of it would have to be done through the town. It would be a project of the town to clear the site and do the preparation work up to two hundred thousand dollars. If it's less than, it's less. And we would be, it would be going through the bid process, everything that's required for the wages, everything that we must manage.
That's so much fun. And knowing how much fun making sure you follow all the government rules is is two hundred thousand dollars the right number?
It be, we, I had not only the Miracle League group's engineer spec out the pricing and the cost, but I also had our town engineer look at it as well. And he felt comfortable that two hundred thousand, even with the wages to do that work on that site was a reasonable number. The questions I had.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So in my view, when this was first presented, I think all of us wrong, we definitely wanted it here. This is, it would be a great asset for the town. And also in my view, the town has done its due diligence on this. We kicked in half of the money for a study to be done to look at alternative sites. The reasons that wasn't viable at the Birch Grove site while it was more cost effective than any other site. The reasons that that site is not being used to me are irrelevant. So that site is is not going to be used, so. I'm uncomfortable with the, with using two hundred thousand dollars for our money considering what we just went through in the budget process, considering the economic times we're facing right now. But mostly, we talked about this being a regional facility. So people from other towns could come and use this facility. My understanding is that the Miracle League is also looking at a second burn it. That would be appropriate and that I think in my understanding is even further along in the process than where we are. So I think if if the Miracle Field were to go to Vernon, town folks could still use it. And I think it's it's a little more inconvenient, but the next town over, if it's really a regional facility, I think going to Vernon might be a good alternative rather than using two hundred thousand dollars of ARPA money.
Thank you. I assure you, if any other comments from councilors, Counselor Luba?
Yes, so when this was discussed in the ARPA subcommittee. So was this, was the unanimous vote sending it forward to the?
Sammy made the motion.
Because I mean, again, I would agree with with Vice Chair Regan where this is something that I feel that is something that town would, that is, it's, I think it would add value to town, but at the same time, it's for the two hundred thousand dollars that that it would cost out of these ARPA funds where it could be used for other, other specific items. I I don't know how I feel about that. I mean, I think it's something that my concern is, is, you know, beyond just this, looking down the road where as we get into the discussion of the actual agreement, if we get to that point, which I believe is next on the agenda, that reading Dr. Willitt's letter that was sent to his Hancock. I mean, it was scary. He read my mind completely on many of the different issues that I identified as far as from the legal standpoint. And that I think that we need to be very clear if we do go forward with this, that we need to have very clear obligations stated that I don't feel comfortable going forward, just say an MOU that that's, that's something that I just think is, you know, that I don't feel comfortable going forward. Now, I don't know if the MOU is being presented just to go forward for, you know, for further discussions or what the situation is because this is something that, I mean, looking down the road, and I agree with what Ms. Mary said before, as far as issues that we had with the high school turf field, there's a lot of things that were said that this would be a, you know, a great thing for the, for the high school, this would be so many people would be using it and it is being used, but it didn't generate the revenue that was promised to keep it going. And that's why my main concern is that this is something where it's going to be very expensive, very time consuming to keep up, to maintain to the appropriate ADA standards, to have the appropriate standards for it to be being imposed. And that's, that's a significant concern of mine. And so I know, while not dealing directly with the two hundred thousand dollars in the ARPA fund, you know, it's something that, looking looking at everything that unless, I guess it's it's almost putting the cart before the horse, but it's something that needs to be considered. Where we need to take a look at this holistically, where if we're going to prove the two hundred thousand dollars, then there needs to be other solid considerations that be, that, you know, that delineate the obligations of everybody involved. And that this is, while although it's on town property, this is a Miracle League field. And it should be their responsibility. It's not, I mean, I don't think it's something that the town is looking to take on this additional responsibility. And that's how it was presented to us before. And although there are other, there's dual benefits to it, I I just have significant, significant concerns regarding using ARPA funds for it, although I am glad to hear that because that was my other question that Ms. Murray put forward is, you know, is this, is this authorized use for ARPA funds? Because that's, that's a, that's the bottom line question there. And now it's just a matter of whether or not we feel that's an appropriate use of the funds or not. So anyway, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. One good question, somebody really good answered your check. It's up to two hundred thousand dollars. I think when I heard it from, it was the estimate was like one twenty to one forty, so two hundred thousand.
About one hundred and forty to two hundred thousand, the estimate that was given to it.
If we end up not using the up to two hundred thousand for that purpose, does it just go back?
Goes back to the ARPA funds.
Alright.
And if I may follow up on that, I'm sorry, I don't mean, you know, I just have, so, and of course, now, so, and it's just for site prep. Is that correct?
Yes, for the right, there's, you know, cutting the trees down, leveling the the ground, making the drainage right and all of that.
Now.
I do have more.
Okay, so I guess this says, follow up question here.
Come on, Lou.
What if we run, what if we run into the issue of?
Contaminated soil?
Yes. I mean, that's, that is the, that's the exacting it. Then where do we, or the unsuitable soil? Where do we, where do we, where do we land on that? And so then that creates a whole other, whole other issue.
To be tested before they even begin doing all of this. But the engineers who are a little more involved with knowing you know, it it, let's put it this way, at Birch Grove, you were putting a building on unsuitable soil. This is more of a field and it doesn't have the same sort of weight impact. I by far am not a professional engineer. There is one in the audience. If you'd like a comment, it's up to you.
Unless you don't want to call them.
Well, it it's up to the.
Mr. Bennett, if you'd like to approach and just state your name and just want to sit at the table here and then. And I know we do have Chuck as well on to present any questions for Mr. Regan, I think you can also.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here.
So I'm muted, so.
I'm sorry, our town engineer is here also. Thanks, Chuck.
So just for the record, Todd Penny, professional engineer, state of Connecticut. And engineer rep for the Miracle League.
So have you looked at, I mean, if I, yeah, so, Mr. Chair. Has there been, has there been studies as far as for the area that's now being posed?
There's certainly, certainly a like phase one environmental study has not been done. You know, where you would look at past land use. That's second forest growth in the frontage of Birch Grove. We probably have maybe twelve inches of topsoil in through there. You'd have to do test holes to see what you had for depth. Certainly, knowing what that field was back in the turn of the century or even in the eighteen hundreds, whether that was a farm field. And historically, I don't know that, we haven't looked at that. But you'll probably run into some depth of topsoil out there. Certainly will require an eighteen inch excavation for eighteen inches of gravel for our site. So that's that's a lot of topsoil, eighteen inches. In a wooded area like that, depending on what it chooses, you may have four to eight inches. I'm not sure what the other site was in terms of Birch Grove. I don't know what those testings were, but I'm not.
Well, is that, is that, is that like a professional, where the insurance policy on it as well or?
That's a professional engineer's opinion.
Okay.
Certainly, we, we do have the town of Genere here as well. Chuck, do you have a comment?
You know, Todd's, Todd's right, the, and and you're right, Lisa, you know, the, the due diligence and everything needs to be done. And, you know, that's what that initial two hundred thousand dollars would would be used for before, before we really get into an exact design.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And thank you for your patience, Councilor Newcheck.
Lisa, did you have something to say before I, I talked? You have raised your hand.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that a lot of the concerns that Counselor Luba has will be discussed in the next topic, which we, I think I sent out a communication suggesting that it be tabled regarding the contract because we're not quite there yet, but I was going to talk about that next. But I have sent out some preliminary bullet statements. But when we get through that, I'll talk to you again. Because that includes a lot of your concerns being.
No, I know, that's what I said. I know I'm jumping ahead.
Yes. So I just wanted to put you at ease that.
Nothing puts me at ease.
Anyway, thank you.
So first of all, yeah, so if I understand Miracle Field has been given a great offer over in Vernon. It makes me really disappointed that we have kids in Tolland being referred to Vernon to play. Their families are also taxpayers. So I think that's important to remember. This is a good use. Like I said, it was unanimous, Sammy made a motion. I'm more than happy, I'm glad we're getting trust from other people. I'm more than happy to look at these fields, unfortunately weren't maintained in the past, but yes, I don't really know. But I think this is a great use. Ms. Damian and I went and watched a little of the game. There were a lot of people there. The excitement these young adults and kids were having. I want to go out there and play. I want to pitch. But anyways, I mean, I know there's a lot of controversial, but like I said, Tammy, especially Tammy, you know, she's a numbers gal. She wanted to know the numbers and how much we'd have left over after we had the running list of this and the possible things that might be coming up. That I should have mentioned the Board of Education capital items on there as well, I think it's four. So we're looking at the town as a whole. I mean, honestly, come on, us, we're the ones that wanted to study and move it somewhere else. If it was at the original spot, we wouldn't be in the spot. But I wanted to say, I've been asking like, let's talk about field in Tolland, mainly thinking about Tolland soccer, Dave Garrett, you know? Thinking maybe we can put in a new field for him and then the Leavewitzes could have, a Miracle Field could have that field. But then we figured out it was going to cost three hundred thousand, right? It was going to cost a hundred thousand dollars more. So there were a lot of options that we were talking about. And again, like, you know, this is an investment for Tolland. It's, the businesses are going to make money. And why, you know, the spot, you know, there's going to be a lot of attraction here. And it's not just for people with disabilities. As I understand it, that there's buddies that are there helping out. It's the families there have connections. They don't have those connections. You know, at other places. It's, you know, it's really to me disappointed how this community would say we're for, but there's a but after everything. You either support it or you don't. To say go to Vernon. I mean, that's disappointing. No, it is.
It's a regional facility. If they were to say, if it doesn't go in Tolland, it's going in Danbury, that would probably change my thought process. But it's going in Vernon. Next town over, I said five minutes ago, a little less convenient for people in Tolland, but they still have a Miracle Field. That's the point.
Right, but like, I look at it too as Miracle Field is, they get the Board of Education, I totally get their concerns, right? And I think we're going to talk about that in the next segment, which I think is really important. And then I kind of get disappointed too that they weren't part of the conversation. They were invited to a stakeholder meeting. They weren't there. I think Dr. Willitt was there for a little. So they were invited to, for their input. I think we got an email from Mr. Murray. Maybe another board member, maybe Ms. Griffin. So that, that's helpful, right? So it's just this, you know, this will put Tolland on the map. It's a, it's nationwide. I mean, it's not just a Tolland thing. There's only going to be four in state. It's, I just think it's going to be a really good thing for Tolland. And again, we have major capital items on our runner. So Lisa, I maybe, maybe the council needs to get Tammy's really good question. We add all this up, how much money would we have left? I think it was like a million five.
Yeah, we looked at adding the other capital items that are on the list to try to take my other capital program, reduce the amount of debt or tax dollars that we'd be trying to use. And there could be about a little over a million left.
I mean, we could take off a lot of other big items. And again, I think it's great that, and then another thing I want to say before someone else has question. I mean, we could take off a lot of other big, and again, I think it's great that, and then another thing I want to say before someone else has questions is, if anything, this has opened the door to talking about people with disabilities. And that's really good, because people are questioning, you'd be able to write ADA, and at these other fields, you need to make them ADA, and I know Lisa, you said you're working on that, but I think that's great. For finally talking about how to help everyone in our community for all the other.
We have a commission of people with disabilities.
I am on it, right.
So there is a conversation, don't you think?
Not about the ADA fields, we've been talking a lot about the green, our conversations are a lot about the green. Yeah, yeah.
Just one other quick, sorry, are you?
I'm done.
Okay, just one other quick question regarding, obviously, it was kind of updated or revised from the original packet, it was, I think on Monday, that the resolution was on the condition of the negotiated execution of a contract, correct?
That is correct.
So obviously, you know.
So you can approve it, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, no, certainly there are members that really want to hear, you know, maybe mixed feelings, but if, if we can't get forward the contract, again, somewhere, if we don't use up to 200,000 dollars, it would just go back into the fund. Obviously, just the first thing I would like to see negotiations continue, and I think this is a good faith effort, but if there's something we can't reconcile, the money doesn't, isn't already spent, it's not checked, so.
What I can share is that so far, in my interactions with the Mr. and Mrs. Liebowitz, and myself, and the attorney, and various stakeholders involved, a lot of the concerns that are being expressed are being discussed and dealt with, and they have been pretty much acceptable. To all of it, it's just making sure that it is put into a firm legal commitment, for both sides of what is expected of each other and how it'll go forward. So we're, we're making progress on it, it's just, you don't want to rush into preparing a contract unless you make sure you have everybody. I'd like to make sure all of you are aware of what's going into it, as well as the Miracle Group, and making sure that we have a good understanding before I bring it forward to you, to say, okay, you know, this is going to be the final document, and then I can move forward in signing it. The original one I had, the chair and vice chair, that'll come off, and we'll put the town manager or the interim town manager, whatever case it may be, to go forward, if that's how you progress this evening.
So I wanted to quickly question, like, really, Chuck, slash Todd, so I'll ask Chuck first, is, have you had a chance to review the site? And is it based off of what was sent previously throughout all these studies, is, is the site that's being considered reasonable for what's being proposed? Or, you know, the, the Miracle Field, like, okay, logistics, what schematics, you know, that it, it fits in that space?
Yes, I think it fits in that space, I think that there's going to be some small detail things that still need to get worked out. You know, discussions with the different stakeholders, you know, orientation of the field, that sort of thing, but yes, I think it, I think it fits there. So it, it, it is a, an opportune location.
Mr. Benny, are you being agreed that it's all being stopped?
Yeah, so, uh, do you guys have a copy of the PDS I put together showing?
I believe you, so, yeah, I'm going from past emails.
So there's an, there's an 80, there's an 80 scale and a 40 scale, so the 80 scale kind of shows the larger front wooded area than 40 scale kind of shows, blow up. It's a very flat area up there, if everybody's driven by that wooded area, it's relatively flat. So it's perfect, I think, in terms of what we need to do out there. The alignment is the optimal alignment, north or east, in terms of the pictures now to center field. So, um, in, in my professional opinion, it, it's fine, there is a great difference between the parking area that's adjacent to the athletic field, so that's what we're talking about. Parking on the other side, accessible parking on the other side, and then you'll have an accessible route from the accessible spaces up to where the bleachers and dugouts and how you would access the field. So I'm very comfortable with that site, and, and to Mr. Garrett's credit, you know what? You, you think, you know, can't see the trees through the forest, so to speak, and kudos to him, you know, so.
And I think that answers your question. No, thank you, Mr. Benny, and that one question for Lisa, in terms of, I think you kind of asked it. When it's basically being clear, is there an opportunity for, you know, obviously we have the Conservation Commission, sites to log selective forestry to, you know, make some money to create a rolling fund, would we be able to gain any funding that might offset this from clearing those? Like, if they say, well, these trees are good for lumber, you know, would there be any opportunity for the town to reduce the costs? Because whoever clears a site will say, oh, this is great timber, use this for this purpose.
That could potentially offset it, it will depend on the timber removal. I mean, if I'm fortunate enough to maybe get someone who wants to donate their services for the use of the timber, that could be another option. There's a lot to look at, whereas, you know, we may not have to pay for it, but they have the authority to sell it, making, yeah, or you offset it. So, so that, that is an option, there's, you know, there's so many things that we're looking at right now. But again, I just don't know with the, there's a lot of moving parts right now.
Most likely probably clearing just for the site.
Could be sold, and that would be my choice.
Council Louba and then Council.
No, I'll let her go.
Well, I mean, if I could give you a point of reference.
Yes.
May, may, maybe I might have told you guys before, but I'm the town engineer at Coventry. So we're working on a transfer station, and we're going to be clearing three acres. This property here is about a half an acre, maybe a little bit larger. It's going to cost us $8,500 to clear that three acres and take all the wood away, 8,500 bucks. Right? What's that?
Who's doing it? That's cheap.
You hired me as your town engineer, maybe we'll talk. So that's your order of magnitude, because there's, there is a resource, there is value in that material. Now, there's not a great value, alright, to be a, a logger or a timber harvester is not a lucrative, but there's, there's value. So that's an order of magnitude, now I'm not saying it's going to be a third of the 8,400 dollars, because you have mobilization costs and things of that nature. Oh, by the way, gas is going way up, right? So there's operational costs as well. So the cost that ends up happening is the removal of the stumps, is your grubbing and your something of that area. That's where that disposal cost gets to be quite large, so, just, yeah.
And sorry, before we go for second rounds, I think Counselor Con has a chance to speak, so I reckon.
I just want to make, uh, I just got a couple of questions for you. Your original proposal was, you just won the land and do everything. This case, the land is, you have to work on it, the town has to work, get a good owner. And what happened after that, if we give it the land, are you guys on our original purpose, and you took, you guys are going to take the full, uh, uh, how do you say it, maintenance, everything else, you guys do everything, you're responsible for it?
Well, I'm going to talk, I'm going to talk to the construction, I'm not, I'm not the, I'm not the maintenance guy.
Talking about, as everybody's here, that much money.
Oh, but the proposal, the estimate that Lisa got, and hopefully the council got,
I'm going to be on.
Kind of, kind of shows our participating costs, you know, the Miracle League cost, which is five and a half to 600,000 dollars, because costs are going up, right?
Yep.
Alright, so, we, that's why we need to start to strike while this iron is hot, because costs continue to rise now, and so. But in terms of the maintenance and the operations and all that, that's part of the MOU. Might buy it, Steve Liebowitz, working.
Yeah, we just, just recognize it's a separate conversation, separate agenda, this, this conversation really should only focus on the ARPA funds and the 200,000, if there's questions about the agreement, we should probably save that discussion if I'm a part in the meeting, because it's.
My wood, I'm the founder of that. Well, that's where I'm coming to, and I just wanted to clarify myself. I have to, I, I had to ask if the words is.
Okay. Just to put you at ease, the way that this resolution is written is that the use of those funds for that specific purpose that we're allocating for is contingent on the condition of the negotiation and execution of a contract between the town, Tallinn, and the Miracle League, with all your concerns being addressed.
I do understand it. The only problem is, there's almost out there that, that the town is going to take a responsibility, I'm not, the town is going to do it, and we are giving them a silver platter with even the 200,000, there's a room out there. I just want to make sure that, I just want to clarify some couple of questions for everybody, that town is not taking any responsibility beside, beside that.
We, we are working on that. There may be certain things that the town may do, but there is a payment for that service, if that's the case. So for removing track or whatever, you know, the, the ported potties in, in the contract negotiation, we're working on. The Miracle League has said that they would pay for a handicap port, port of that. You know, in, in what we're negotiating so far, there's still a lot going on, but regarding, you know, there's certain things that they are going to do, like blowing off a deal and things, but that's all to be worked out, and certainly will be shared with each and every one of you before we go anywhere. And we're trying to explain.
I'm in the favor. Okay, good, okay. And I'm not, I'm not in the favor of sending that handicap person to next, next town, simple. I'm not, I don't care what. I would like to have a neighbor in town, Tallinn. I would like to keep those kids in town, Tallinn. I don't, I don't have to put them in a bus, carry on in a bus, can, parents carry, carries on the bus? No. Not next door, no, right here, right in Tallinn. And I appreciate whatever you do for those kids, as well, Chuck, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Con. I think it was, Counselor, you did check, and then Counselor Louba, you yielded, but, okay. Thank you.
Can I just ask the people, it's a question, is that?
They're willing to approach, it's time, you're going to, you could probably hang back a little bit and leave with this, you know, approach.
I just had a question.
We're headed to Scotland in two weeks, and I don't want to have a friend come to this, that I have.
Anyways, could you just give us a rough idea how many people would be using this field, not just in Tallinn?
Right, West, West Hartford and East Line.
We're talking about the 200,000 dollars.
Yeah, but I think it's relevant to what this, why we're voting on this, right? I think it's relevant to people that know it's not just for 12 kids.
I spoke to a bunch of people about this, but he said, can you not do have it there, because the kids can have it.
So I guess, I guess, to the first of this conversation, because we're talking about creating the site, it's, it's talking about the site, I think you have to know what we're, the site could eventually become once the negotiations move forward, so I guess the rule that, that asking about the field, just keep it, we're in relation as much as possible to the site plan and what 200,000 dollars being approved for, but you can certainly receive a question about the Miracle Field itself in general.
Well.
I just don't want to go too far off the wheels.
Well, I just think the public has these questions, so I just think it's a question for the public, but maybe I can ask you aside.
Or the next section.
Or that section, but I guess if I can't ask that question, I apologize to the council for that. Thank you for all you do, I know it's probably not part of this conversation, you know, but thank you for your service that you do for Tallinn. I know a few years ago, you won a blind award for what you do, and I guess I will follow up my question next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, no, Ms. Hancock. Or do we have, like, so we're, we're looking at the 200,000 dollars, and you were saying that the clearing projection that we have right now is approximately 120, 130, is that? I mean, I, so I guess I'm just trying to figure out the, the exact amount as far as what we're looking for, where, you know, we're saying up to 200,000 dollars, but what the more realistic figure is? I mean, we had some opportunities to sort of have people take a look at it and get at least a, a rough estimate. And what I don't want to have is have us go in saying, okay, it's going to be 200,000 dollars, and then it ends up being 250,000 dollars or 300,000 dollars, as we've seen, in, I think, every project that I, that we've had come through town since I've been on the council. And, you know, not even addressing Birch Grove, because Birch Grove is a completely different animal. But just everything that we've seen, that it's always been more than we've anticipated. And that's my concern, is that we say 200,000, and then we start to work, and all of a sudden, it comes to a point where now we're facing something where 200,000 dollars isn't going to cover, and that we're, now it's either going to be placed upon Miracle League, where they have to come up with the remainder, or they finally, or they say, look, we can't do that, we're going to go someplace else now, because we can't cover that, that expense. And, you know, I'm, again, I know I'm being fatalistic and I'm looking at the worst case scenario, but that's our job right now, is to look at the worst case scenarios we can see, because I think that we want to see it happen, but we have to be realistic, we have to face some of the, some of the difficulties that we may encounter based upon past experience. So, I'm sorry, it was a long, long question, but do we have realistic figures?
Yes.
Okay.
I, the, the numbers that I'm looking at in front of me right now is about 138,000 dollars, so we said 140 to 200. Now, from my understanding, I don't think that is numbers that prevailing wages, but.
Those numbers are based on estimates that I use for my work, which is prevailing.
That would be true, okay, so we do have a question in there, just in case something happens. But when I also, and Chuck is also here as well, I also asked him the same questions, take a look at what has to be done here, it was all shared with him. He looked at it, he looked at the, the site information, and also felt comfortable, even with prevailing wages, that up to 200,000 to clear and prepare that site would be sufficient, and if it's okay, can I just ask him to confirm that? Chuck, would you mind?
Sure, and, and so that's why, you know, I like the fact that you are using the upper number of 200 as opposed to 150, so that you have some escalation cost in there, you have some, you know, dealing with the ARPA money cost in there, we don't know what we're going to find for soils and have to do for stormwater and all this sort of thing. So there's, you have some contingency in that 150,000 to pay for those things.
And then just as a follow up to that, I know that we're talking about, you know, prevailing wages, but since this is work done for the town, on town property, is that, does that put us into a different thing? Where now we're bound by, by separate, you know, separate requirements for, I'm trying to remember, what's?
So, I, I think I can answer that, so you're going to, you're going to be looking at both state wage rates and federal wage rates? The town is using federal money, but they're, they're essentially the same rate?
Yeah, it's, state of Connecticut prevailing wage, we are not susceptible to that, because there, for new construction, it's up to a million dollars for the project, and so we're certainly well under that, this portion of it. The federal, unfortunately, since back in the 40s or the 30s, yeah, is a 2,000 dollar.
Requirement.
Yeah, so we're definitely under, under the ARPA funding use, we will have to abide by federal regulations. That means bidding it out, doing everything we have to do. That means bidding it out, doing what, everything we have to do, um, to make sure we comply with the use of those funds appropriately. Okay.
Are there any questions, Councilman Gray?
Um, I'm in favor of using up to two hundred thousand dollars worth of ARPA funds for the Miracle Field Site Preparation. This is less than five percent of Tallinn's total ARPA designation. I think that there are benefits to families who has, uh, Councilman Ucheck reminded us of taxpayers here in Tallinn. Um, it has benefits to businesses. Personally, I'd rather see the business go to, uh, the Tallinn Dunkin' Donuts instead of the one in Vernon. Just me. I also, uh, wanted to refer to a, a quote in one of the many emails we received about this. And one of our, uh, neighbors here in Tallinn quoted, uh, President Franklin Delano Roosevelt when he said, "The test of our progress is not whether we add more to the abundance of those who have much. It is whether we provide enough for those who have too little." These kids have too little. And this two hundred thousand dollars seems like a very, very good use to me.
Thank you.
Councilman Murray, is there any further discussion? All right, seeing that, I think, uh, there might be some this, this engine, so I'm going to go by roll call votes, I'm going to go left to right and.
Has the motion.
I was sorry, I didn't entertain a motion, sorry. Before we go to vote, I didn't entertain a motion to approve the resolution as outlined on three.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Councilor Ucheck, is there a second, seconded by Councilor Khan. Do you know the discussion? Do a roll call vote, so I'll start from left to right, Councilor Gray?
Yes.
Councilor Khan?
Yeah.
Councilor Reagan?
No.
Councilor Luba? Do you need a moment, we pass? Okay. Councilor Ucheck.
Yes.
I'm also a yes, uh, Councilor Luba? And we went quick.
Yes.
All right, so that is two four five one, so that passes. Moving on to eight point four is a discussion of possible approval of Miracle Field Agreement. Uh, that was also updated from what was published Thursday to what was revised on Monday. Um, I think the negotiations is, this will probably elaborate on, are still in progress. Recommendation that was sent to the council, we reiterated here that those negotiations, negotiations need to continue, so the recommendation would either to table or postpone this to a future council meeting.
Pretty much said what I was going to say. I just, I just have to say, you know, the discussions between Mr. and Mrs. Lee Woodson and Mike Byham um, that I've been having, have been going very well with. I think pretty much trying to cooperate with one another and trying to really build a solid contract to address the concerns. There's, there's a little more to it that will be involved as well, um, to protect the town as well as the funds that, um, are going to be put forward, forward. Part of it includes a trust fund that would need to be established. And I also met with our bond counsel today as well to, because he handles that sort of stuff. And, um, and we discussed it as far as setting up a, a legal trust, so that way the funds that are deposited to replace the field in the future, which that is going to be worked on, uh, the initial deposit that we're talking about is putting fifty thousand dollars in there to start and then adding at least fifteen thousand a year, but according to Mr. and Mrs. Lee Woodson, they may have that replenishment to replace the field within a few years and will have to do fifteen thousand a year. Um, let's just, but you know, it just says, yeah, a possibility, but the, the first, you know, part of the contractual agreement is to be able to establish a trust that, you know, is not just under the control of the Miracle Group, it's not just under the control of the town, but it's got to set forth all the concerns about the use of it for using the field, uh, to replace the field. So there's a lot of things that need to be discussed and, and hatched out to make sure that that's all done appropriately, as well as those funds being protected from any predator of the town. Um, not that we're in any sad financial condition, but it's always best to make sure that, you know, something specific is that is protected. Um, so, so that's one piece of it, but also there's been the different, um, concerns. And certainly if you want to share more this evening, you're, you're more than welcome to share those with me as I try to move forward. I should, I sent, I did send a draft copy. Uh, it's a redlined and, and like I said, we're still working on it, it's, um, it really needs to be a formal contract and not a memorandum of understanding or memorandum of intent. It's, it really needs to be the, the well-drawn-out negotiated contract of who's going to be responsible for what, who's paying for what, and to make sure everything is clear. Um, so certainly I, I, I shared that with everybody. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to look at it, but by all means, if you haven't had chance, you know, if you lost it or whatever, sometimes email gets crazy. I could resend it, um, but feel free to share any concerns you have with me tonight or by email. However, you know, just don't send it as a group. And, you know, I can make sure it's incorporated and discussed with the Miracle Group as well. Um, but we, we have spent a significant amount of hours going back and forth, um, trying to get everything. Yeah, right now, everything's just on paper. It's not really a formal contract per se, but it's getting
closer.
The commitments on paper as to who's going to do what, which way and how it's paid for. So my recommendation is, since we're not at a point to really be signing any contracts this evening, is for it to, um, to be postponed until we can get this together. I, I don't want to drag it along and neither does the Miracle Group, um, Miracle League. We really want to get this completed, maybe before I'm done in my position. Um, I'm not soon how quick that's going to happen, but, um, we really would like to get this solidified and, and move forward. And I'm not sure where it's going to stand after tonight's meeting. Um, certainly I have to speak with Lee Woodson to see if the intent is still to move forward.
So I have one quick question, I want to put Lee Woodson on the spot, but knowing that we just passed the two hundred thousand, do you feel it's a good faith signal that negotiations can continue? And I guess I'd ask the same of Lee Woodson, but obviously it's negotiations, I don't want to drag.
Well, I could speak.
Yeah.
Yeah. East Lime and West Hartford only had an MOU. Um, East Lime welcomed the project. There wasn't a concern about a replacement or anything else. The MOU is a letter of intent. It's a good faith effort on the town council's party. It's not a contract, it's not binding contract, it's not anything, it's to say tonight, we want this and we want to move forward. And, and because in the MOU, it said, in, in, it said sixty days, I said thirty days. Both sides can make a contract.
Yeah.
So to make the, you know, so that's what the MOU, it's, it's no different than you putting an offer on a house. You put that offer on a house and there's contingencies and everything else. But in our minds, and you know, it's been about a year, what we've done. And what we're looking for in, you know, you know, one thing I want everybody to think about tonight is why are the Leebordses and Miracle League even still here? Vice Chairman Reagan. Let's put it in, it's his prerogative, why are we here? Why we're here? Because our kids were twenty-five years. Think about the asset this is for Bird's Grove and the ADA community. That Bird's Grove can use it, it's available to them, it's a field that doesn't puddle. It's a field that has no pesticides on it or anything else. So it's a, utilized by, so it's an asset to the town. Um. If, you know, if, I'm not going to say what Vernon's offer is or whether it's better or not, but even though, and why did we go to Vernon? We went to Vernon, we went to Collins, we went to Wellington, because, you know, this went back and forth and, you know, till we got to this point.
And we want the field to be where it's fully wanted. And we don't want to put it here because we want to put it here. We want to put it here because it's embraced by the community.
We don't want a community to accommodate us. We want them to want us and fight for us and say, thank you for giving us this gift in our community. You, you, you can't imagine hours and hours and hours Laurel has spent and we've spent to reach two hundred thousand dollars. You know, with a full-time job and everything else and putting that reputation, you know, so I, I know we talk back and forth about replacement. Why would we, I, you know, and it's not us, we have a community of thirty, forty, fifty, Colin's been to many of our events. We had a gala, we have a golf tournament, you know.
We've got a event going on right now in five of the restaurants in town supporting us.
Town, right, raising money where a percentage of the proceeds are going to us, but they're getting, again, it was, it was in talent. And so that's the one thing I don't want anyone to recite. So what we're looking for is, you know, I, we've probably, you know, had a pretty good agreement with Vernon for probably six weeks. But it's an accommodation, we came to Tallinn first. And we, we don't feel, you know, you guys spend a lot of time and effort in engineering study. It's, it's, it's not my vote, it's not Laurel's vote, it's not Todd's vote, we have a committee of nine people. And I, and I can't tell you right now where that, where the committee's going to go. But, you know, so what, what we're looking for, and I think Mr. Byham stated this, is that's what the MOU is. It's not a binding contract. It's a le- it's, it's an intent, you know, and we're, we're willing to take that MOU. And, you know, it covers everybody, there's no commitment, there's no, no basis or anything else to do it. So that's why, you know, tabling it sort of hamstrons Tallinn a little bit. Because it just means I have to just pu- keep putting off Vernon and put off, and Vernon knows we talked to Tallinn, Tallinn knows, but, and we're not, we're not hitting it. The deal between the two is no different. We're not trying to get the best, we didn't bring in Vernon to get the best deal from Tallinn, we didn't bring in, we had to do something, listen. These kids need somewhere to play. And, you know, I know Colleen came down and said, it, it's incredible. It is amazing to watch, you know, Jeff DiNofrio wheel his daughter with two kids around the field on, on a wheelchair, you know.
And I know you didn't, we have eighteen players on our team, South Windsor Kane, they have twenty players. Right there, we've got, that's twenty-eight players, three different, thirty-eight from just two towns. Um, Coventry, we have Coventry players, Wellington players. So when you're asking how many people, there's ninety, there's forty towns.
Forty-five, both fields draw players from forty-five communities, West Hartford, East Lime. People, families travel up to an hour to plan this field because of what it is and it's ADA accessible. Wheelchair accessible, the ball bound, you saw, excuse me, you get down the field, it's incorrect. I mean, you know, and that was covered with snow. And so that's why we'd rather not table it, because it's only an MOU. It's, 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 it's all it is, it's not a contract or anything else. It's just something put forward to say, hey, here's our framework. Now let's take thirty days and let's see if we can make a deal, if we can't make a deal. So that's why we would like that to go on the, on an MOU or, or an intent to do this going forward. And, you know, just, and then, I, you know, if we have that, then I will go to my advisory board and say, okay, with, you know, with an MOU. An MOU with talent. It's not binding on anybody. You know, it's almost like a straw, you know, even if you guys take straw votes and everything else. But I just, you know, I just, e- e- even, you know, and I don't want this to be a ten count of republic. Seems to have become that. A- a- and I'm a Republican. And the Republican, yeah, so it's for the special needs community of talent. And this is a gift we're trying to give to. We're not looking to put talent in a debt. We're not looking to, um, give you a financial thing that's going to be a bad thing. Um, we've raised the money, we have backers, we, 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 the MOU, we'll put up fifty thousand dollars. We'll, we're committing to fifteen thousand a year. We won't, you know, a- and this is beyond us, that, that, you know, this deal will be built. And my hope is going forward, if it is in talent, that all of you ensure that this field will be there and help fundraise and be partners in this. And, you know, so that's really why we'd like to see a vote on, on an MOU tonight or a vote to say, okay, you know, if, if Lisa, if Lisa and Rick Conti can get the language right, they have the authority to sign the MOU. Because all it is is an intent and a good faith gesture from this town council to put the Miracle Field in town. And that's, I guess, all, you know, that's our, our, something we're asking for. Um, we do have an MOU from Vernon, it's been through their attorney, it's, it's, it's now in our lap, what, you know, what we want to do with it. And, but, you know, you guys have to let your conscience guide you, you know, on what you, you know, what you feel the, you know, the best thing is, but you know, that's, you know, why we're still here today. So, thank you.
Appreciate it. I, I just will say before I open the four other questions, I, you know, I've had some conversations with Lisa and I was under the impression, at least personally, and unless I'm hearing wrong, and obviously hearing something differently, it seemed as though the notion was is that ARPA funds would be that good faith gesture and that Lisa really needed to continue to have these discussions. We would even offer a special meeting if we, you know, rather than waiting to an next regular meeting, we'd have the next available meeting so that she could work through this week with you, with you folks, to can, you know, finalize it and bring it back for, well, I, we're, we're forming a vote, but that's just.
Well, I think, yeah, Mr. Byham, I think, said in the May Day meeting that we want to choose a field by the end of the month. You know, that, that, that's our vote, we wanted to do it by the gala, so if we can get something, again, you know, how close, Lisa, how close are we? I mean, you, you, on Friday you had Rick's, you know, Thursday or Friday you had Rick's comments, I assume.
I do have this, I met with him again today and there's, there's still things that we just want to make sure that are all put together. But we wanted to put it into a formal contract rather than an MOU or an MOI, um, memorandum of intent, um, so that.
And, and the memorandum of intent's good for us to say, okay. To say, okay, now that, you know, say, okay, we got, we got the MOU now, let's negotiate a contract. Let's just.
Well, I do not have anything prepared this evening, um, that they could actually vote on. And I just have the drafts with.
Yeah, that was the understanding that, when I spoke to Lisa on Monday, and that was what her recommendation of the council, which she shared with us in the email, was going to reiterate tonight, is we didn't have anything finalized and she needed to get back to you folks.
And think more.
The first we heard about the, um, what, I'm, I'm going to blank on the. No, um, table was at the board event meeting last night. It's the first I've heard of it. I mean, we, we, you didn't know there were tables, did you?
You talked about it, but I think what I said, we just need a deadline. When are you going to have a decision? Because it does, it, it does keep getting pushed and pushed and pushed. And there's always going to be something. There's always going to be something in the way of it somehow. And I, I just think that if you sent it out to all of them and not everybody's looked at it and read it and has a discussion, I, you know, you know.
Yeah, I, I don't want to talk too much about the details of the negotiations, it's still being discussed, it really should be worked internally with the talent. We kind of voted to really have Lisa working with the Miracle League with providing, you know, information updated as it was being done from Lisa to the council, to sharing the input before it was brought back. But my intent was, at least, you know, I know one, one of the seven or one of the six. The intent was to have it postponed to the next council meeting or to a special meeting if the time allows, like, you know, I think it'll finalize, period, we could find everyone's schedules and host a special meeting.
Make this happen, not trapped out another year or anything like that, for us to sit down, work together.
And I think it's also just.
Document everything and, and just get it done.
And in private, we're just also recognizing, I think it has been a fairly turbulent year. I mean, I think a year ago when we were talking about this, different people were at the table.
And that's, that's going to start happening.
I know.
That, that's one of the.
But it may be a new town manager.
Yeah.
You know, and, you know, and they may have different thoughts.
That's, that's one of the things that's definitely.
That's what happened last time, um. Okay, we're, my vote was the last.
Yeah.
And then everybody hit up the speed again and we started all over and, so I guess. I guess what I, if we, especially if we're going to have a special meeting possibly next week and a non-binding resolution from the members of the town council that says, we want this Miracle Field in town. That we're not spending our time postponing it and then getting to that and then, okay, we're not.
I think a lot of, and I think a lot of that discussion needs to really occur as it was voted upon, like, it's between the town manager's office and Miracle League with, you know, the council being updated and. Miracle League with, you know, the council being updated and the price, right, input, but I know I've spoken quite a bit.
Everything that you want.
I'd like to open the floor to questions from council members or any input. Council, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry. I think that making that request of us saying saying that you need a good faith movement from us, a good faith showing. We just voted two hundred thousand dollars as a good faith. And it wasn't unanimous, and it wasn't by party lines. I want to make make that known. So I I'm a little insulted that you're saying that we need to show more. And I think that that's something that is really, you know, I I'm having a real hard swallow on this right now. Because it was hard enough for me to be able to prove that two hundred thousand dollars. And now you're, I mean, we're coming back around to where we were back last year. When you came to us, when at the Birch Grove meeting, saying you need to act on this now. And, you know, and I understand the reasons why, but at the same time, we're not, you're now making, putting us, putting us in a corner. Where we are being put in a corner where we are expecting, you know, the Miracle League is expecting an MOU. And that we want this done in this time, and we want it done in this way. And I'm like, I'm sorry, I'm not ready to do that. And it's not because I don't, I'm not showing good faith. I think that vote just showed that we have good faith, that we just proved two hundred thousand dollars for clearing this property. And so I I'm I'm really, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit demonized because, you know, that we are again faced with another. Almost ultimatum, saying this is what needs to be done now, or we're going to look elsewhere. And that's that's where we're we're being put again. You're saying I want, we were hoping for a decision by the end of the month. You know, that if that's what it's going to come down to, then my vote's going to be no. And I'm being upfront on it, that we need our obligation, although it's the town, is to do our due diligence, and that's what our requirement is. And that I'm sorry if you were saying that, you know, if the MOU doesn't mean anything, then why do we need it? Yeah, if you're looking for, if you're looking for good faith, two hundred thousand dollars is a good faith. And if the MOU isn't needed, I mean, if you're saying it doesn't mean anything, then why are we even signing it? Why are you even demanding it? You know, what else is there? I think that we need to do this. And I think that we need not just have the town council involved. We need to have the Board of Education involved. So that they can also put in and see what they want out of the out of the contracts as well, because it's going to be on their property. And they're going to also be the ones responsible for maintaining this to some degree. So this isn't just us looking at it from my epic viewpoint. We need to do due diligence, and I understand your concern and your desire to have this built as quickly as possible and to move forward with it. Because I understand you've been waiting at this point, a year and a half almost, from when it was originally brought forward. But we have our obligations. We have to be good stewards, and we have to do what's right for this town. And we have to make sure that we're protecting. There's going to be other things that we have to be concerned about as well, where you're saying one of the things is. That Birch Grove could use this property and use it for the, uh, for the students could use this property. Well, is that going to be done? And I'm not saying this will happen, but I've seen it in other situations where. Is it going to be done? Well, the kids have been using it so much that it's worn down this field. So now you need to step up and pay some additional money. The town needs to step up because that's exactly what happened in West Hartford. With certain people using the fields. And there's been other things, there's other times that things have come up. And I'm really, you know, feel that, again, you're trying, that our hands being forced. We need this MOU because, well, Coventry and all these other towns have just gone with the MOU. I'm sorry, I'm not willing to do that. I don't feel comfortable going forward with an MOU. At the Lord, that would be negligent on my part. As a town council member, which is what I am right now, putting my lawyer position aside, as a town council member, that's even more negligent. Because I need to make sure that everything, all the concerns of the town are appropriately covered. And then we need to get all of the stakeholders involved, not just a town, not just town manager, not just a town council here, but the. But the superintendent of schools as well as, you know, the Miracle League. We need to get everybody involved, but we need to have something that fits us well and covers both sides. And MOU, if, again, I will put to you, if it doesn't mean anything, then why are you demanding it? And if you're saying it's for good faith, what more does that two hundred thousand dollars pledge? What else does that mean? What else do you need? I I'm sorry, and I'm not, I don't mean to. I'm not acting appropriately. My decorum is is aside, and I'm sorry for that. Apologize for that. Because, you know, this is, the town council should be a dignified position and should be a dignified, we should present ourselves appropriately. But I just, i- i- it does bother me that after that vote that you just saw, you could come up and say, that's not good enough, and then I want more. As a good foot faith showing, that that's what bothers me the most, is that we've expressed our support all the way along. And now, you know, just say that we would like to do our due diligence so that we can have something more binding. Because not, we don't feel comfortable going forward with just this. And to say, we need this now or else, which essentially I came across. And, you know, I don't think I'm the only one that got that, then, you know, or or interpreted that way. That that just, that 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 is something that I, you know, it just. It's not bad faith, but it's just, it's just irksome. And and that I I have a real problem with that. Um, now, on to the, you know, I'm sorry for the soliloquy on that. Now, the other question is, is what I mean, that we've seen the issues that that. Uh, the Board of Education has raised, is that something, I mean, if we were going to consider going forward. I think that would need to be appropriately addressed inside this MOU, if you were just going to go forward with the MOU. As it is right now, while we're working on a contract. And so again, I just don't feel comfortable moving forward with this MOU as presented here at all. And that's just, you know, so I'm making it very clear that if we, if it's forced for us to go forward on an MOU tonight, my vote is no. But I I do not feel comfortable with this. I think that we need more than what that is being, than what's being presented. So that the obligations are clearly delineated, especially given the fact that we just pledged two hundred thousand dollars, if we're going to put forward. Two hundred thousand dollars for for all for these purposes, that we need to make sure that it's something that's delineated as far as what those obligations are. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I have a point of information I'd like to ask if I may be allowed.
Before you go, I'd like to actually kind of respond to some of the council with this comments. There was a communication, you know, referred to earlier in the meeting that. Was shared regarding the Board of Education's concerns, and I think Lisa might be able to elaborate a little bit, that some of those concerns are kind of mirrored in the ongoing negotiations. But I guess they just also had to appoint the draft resolution for the two hundred thousand NARPA funds is also. Additional negotiation execution of a contract. So that language, I think, was revised, the fact that it needed a contract on that. Release those funds, just just to clarify.
But I mean, but also just to clarify, I mean, that I don't see these, anything that was captured inside the MOU though. I mean, I think that the MOU as presented, while I understand that it's ongoing negotiations, it's not appropriately reflected inside this MOU that's. Been presented to us. That is, this is probably, as an MOU goes, is probably one of the most bare, basic ones I've ever encountered. And that's why I'm, you know, just concerned about it, especially given the scope of what we're looking, of what we're moving forward with. Thank you.
Councilor, you have to provide some information, then.
Actually, I I have a question. That I'm hoping you could provide some information on. What are we being, what what matter is currently before us for discussion?
So to clarify, eight point four, the resolution is. That the town council approves the agreement between town and town. That's incorporated on agreement, five twenty-four, twenty-two, however. That was not included in the package because it was the recommendation of the intertown manager that we need to postpone it. And information was shared preliminarily, but otherwise, yeah, whatever is being discussed regarding what people are reviewing is not technically. Provided, actually, subsequently provided in the minutes as a reference. So there actually, to be quite blunt, there is nothing for us to vote. Clearly can't. That's why it was recommended to be tabled, apply, you know, at least. The intertown manager, that was understood between all parties and that we needed to postpone this. And that's again, the council group was part of that, because my intent was, like, was. To not be a very lengthy, and obviously provide input, to you have input from everybody as the negotiations continue, but, but yes, again, but. Two hundred thousand was a good faith step towards wanting to keep the Miracle League in town, and that Lisa was being given the continued authorization to negotiate with Rick and the Miracle League, so.
And that, I thank you for clarifying that. That I, the follow-up then to that question is. Um, the motion that was passed unanimously at our May tenth meeting, where the council voted. Uh, to approve the temporary town manager to enter into negotiations with the Miracle Field League. Um, that has, that resolution is still in effect. Is that correct?
Correct. Until I think a contract has been approved, which is also going to be done with eight point three tonight.
Sure.
We're still in that process.
So this council to date has voted. Um, in, as my colleague said, a bipartisan manner to approve up to two hundred thousand dollars. Of ARPA funds to prepare the site for Miracle Field. And in our last meeting, we voted unanimously. To authorize our town temporary town manager to enter into negotiations. Uh, to come to an agreement, to have Miracle Field come to talent. There's, there's more to it than that. I I'm absolutely oversimplifying. Um, but those two things have already passed this council. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for answering my point of information. I greatly appreciate it.
I appreciate your patience. Just bring us back in for a second, take a, a deep breath. Obviously, passion, this is a very, you know, emotional issue, but. Obviously, you know, people get very passionate, just as long, I don't, I mean, it's, you were very, very. I personally threw it. I don't think it was necessarily coming, just as long as we're not. Directly trying to go after each other or saying anything out of, out of order. I think it's as deep as you're explaining yourself. It's appropriate. So I do appreciate the. Follow-up. And then make sure we get your hand next and then, and then council need a check.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I want to go back to when when you first came here and you made this proposal. Everybody said, oh, yeah, we definitely want this in town. I articulated my issue with two hundred thousand, but now that that's passed and and it's been passed by the town council, I'm with you. I want to do everything we can do to get this field in town now, because two hundred thousand has been approved. So I would like to. I think you made some really good points, your description, when you said this is what the council has done. You made your, I agree with your argument, and I think, you, Lisa, you can just keep, keep the ball rolling, right?
Well, that's my intention, as long as that's.
Okay, and if we need a special meeting, I'm, I'm happy to have a special meeting too. You know, I, I, your motives are sincere. I believe in you. I believe in your organization. Now, now that the two hundred thousand has been resolved, now I'm all in. I want to get this thing done in town.
Or call me tomorrow, we can look at this. It's up to you. I just think.
And then councilman, you're checking, before we, before we see, before everything's official, councilman, you're checking out a question. There's a lot of passion in this office.
Big personality. I think I've heard all that before. No.
It's not a first meeting.
And 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 this is not your, this is not your longest meeting either.
No, God, no.
Well, I appreciate the levity. My points are, I I still stand by my points.
Absolutely, and that's your opinion, your opinion.
So I was just gonna say, I was understanding too what Steve said, and that's what it was. I mean, I agree with. That's a little bit that it's definitely good faith to get to the two hundred thou, up up to two hundred thousand dollars. I think we're all. That's why Mr. Regan just said he's actually bored now. So it it sounds like you're going to finish up with. What you've been working on. And if we could, I know there's, there's been mentioned over deadlines. This isn't the first time we've heard about it. Um, there could be a special meeting next weekend. I agree. I think the Board of Education has a lot of good points in their valid, valid concerns, and they. You know, should be respected and should be part of the discussion. So, you know, I really want to care. And a lot of people do. So I don't want you to leave. It's a little bit more time to get it right, as Lisa says she wants to get it right. Like, you know, so, um, that's just. That's how I feel.
I'm a CPA, who's an attorney. The best way to negotiate is to have everybody in the room and negotiate a deal. Ricanti should be there, the board of ed should be there, the town council, our advisory board, and we hammer on a deal. That's the best way, you know, because what's happening is Lisa does it, that she has to send it to the council, and she sends it to Rick, and she sends it to me, and I take.
But unfortunately, we're bound by different rules. We have, we have a FOIA requirement. We, that means that everything that we do is outside and open. And has to be discussed in open chambers, and that there may be some certain things in negotiations that that may not be, that may not want to have brought. Or may not be discussed out in public. So unfortunately, well, I understand that that's normally how things go. That's not how things operate in government. So.
Can I ask a point of information?
Yeah.
I know that the original site was definitely on the school Birch Grove property. But one of the last meetings, it was the discussion of whether that's town property or school property, that where the new field is, has that been determined?
Anything to clarify, Lisa, can back it up on this, the site that Mr. Gere proposed that's currently being discussed is town, like.
Oh, it is town, so.
It is, it is town property. I think there's ongoing related fields and grounds maintenance agreements for various sites that are. Adjacent to school facilities that are managed, you know, based off that agreement, Lisa, maybe you can clarify. But in the very least, I'm fleet, we could clarify that spaces, town properties aren't used.
All that's is town, okay, even where the schools are, that's all. Not saying this side of the town, it's Board of Education properties, the town buildings, they're all town property. So if you were to, for example, say you were selling the Birch Grove property. That, not saying you're doing that after everything you've been through, but as an example, it would have to go through the town charter requirements of selling that property. That is a town parcel. Overall. So now, if the negotiations of this contract of what you're trying to do. Has any impact on the Board of Education, then by all means, they should be included. If if it's ever going to have any. Future impact, I mean, certainly they should be included to share their concerns. The way it's settled, set up right now is that. The only impact that in the language that we're talking about would be that they're allowed to use it during the day. During the school day and, um. Any other use would then be limited then to the Miracle Field for Miracle Group for their activities, and then everything else would go through the talent. Parks and Recreation, Recreation Programs for scheduling. Um, so there'd be used by various organizations, but right now, there's no discussion whatsoever of the Board of Education being responsible to maintain it, to. Custodial services for it, to repair anything. Um, and those are, you know, the things that we should discuss in more detail, but that's, that's where we're at in negotiations right now.
Yeah, and that was the understanding, I think, a lot of it, not to open up any of the cans and worms, but that was kind of based off of a lot of the concerns with high school field and other. Fields that, you know, have agreements that are kind of in limbo now, that this, we're trying to airtight, that this is the town. And the Miracle League, and that because it is in close proximity, the school system could use it at their leisure. But the primary purpose is to give the kids of Miracle League a home and to have it available for other, you know, high-needs folks that could. Utilize the field, like Miracle League is used. So certainly the board can provide input, and they have, I mean, certainly they would like to come, did invite them to the May fifth special meeting, and. You know, it's my recollection, Mr. Mari sent in commentary, I believe Christine Griffin stayed for some of the meeting, Dr. Willsey for some of the meeting, but it was the same night as. Our budget meeting, so they don't know how long we stayed, but really, the only key input we got was from Mr. Mari, and then again, tonight, in public commentary. Mr. Mari is the only person who provides additional insight, but otherwise, you know, we really, when we share our minutes, that's something else, I just want to kind of. Put out there is, we share our minutes, it's part of the package. So I've heard some discussion about how some things were surprising to people, and. I think that's something that, to me, just personally, a little bit frustrating, because it seems that we try and share a lot of information. And I'll say it now, because I was going to say it later, but I do think we need to reinstitute or discuss between Lisa and Dr. Will, having a word at the liaison. With them, it used to happen in the past. I think some of these communications should be alleviated between, especially with this topic. But with that, sorry.
Well, just and one other consideration, just to make sure it's clarified, Dr. Willett was there right through to the end during that meeting. Dr. Willet was there right through to the end during that meeting. And at that meeting, I think the preferred site that you took a straw poll vote on was the Cross Farms location. When our engineer went to look at, as well as the Miracle Group, and there was discussions of moving the shed and everything else. The shed has electricity, irrigation. When you start looking at moving that, which was not part of the original proposal, and the wetlands that are in that area, it would have been much more costly to try to manage that area versus going to this particular area where it was only 140 to 200,000 to prepare. Certainly would have been, if we did not have to replace the fields and wanted to go originally, there'd be no impact as far as that's concerned. But we're trying to please everybody and accommodate the best we can, which is important. So I just wanted to clarify that to, you know, so the Board of Education, at that point, probably was not aware of this site eight, except for the discussion in that meeting. It was discussed as a second alternate location. The preferred one was Cross Farms, but it just wasn't going to be feasible with the cost involved. So I, I just want to clarify that for whoever was online through the end, then they would have heard that piece of the discussion, and that's how we got to this alternate site.
Yeah, and then on the 10th, we had, we allowed you to go into negotiations, we clarified the patient at that.
Right.
That's my perspective, but again, so just to kind of bring us back to the topic. It should be postponed to our next regular meeting or a special meeting, as can be afforded, you know. You know, that's at least how I think a motion would probably move forward. I don't know if there's any further discussion before we kind of get to that point. I think a special meeting would be ideal, and invite any appropriate parties. Councilman, you check.
Well, next week's a short week, but I would recommend a special meeting next week, so that would bring us into June. That would bring us into like, what, December?
I will be out of state.
And so I think that it's very important to definitely invite, I agree with that, but, I mean, one who's Miracle Field, then with the June.
I would like to finish this up, if it's okay. This, hopefully this week, to try to get as close as possible to getting what everybody would like in this agreement. And if you're available for discussions as well, I think we're, we've got our concerns that were shared with me from the Board of Ed, we can discuss all that, I can share that with you. But, you know, if you want to have a special meeting next week, we can, I will accommodate something like that. The June 3rd through the 10th, I will be out of state.
Yes, it's a tough one, no doubt, if it into, but.
Well, I'm going to work to do whatever it takes and work with our, you know, trust fund could be set up afterwards, but still, we can, we can at least get the language in there that a trust fund has to be set up with a deposit, you know.
So, Councilman Murray?
I just wanted to add to the comments before me, that I am in favor of operating this to town. It's not a hindrance or a nagging thing. I, I'm very excited about putting this down. And again, to echo the words that came before me, thank you. Thank you for bringing this to us. I know sometimes the way government works is really messy. But I think it's really wonderful to see how other people contribute to our community in different ways. And I think this is a group of people that we volunteer our time to contribute to our community in one way. And it takes a village, so, you know, you guys are picking up a different, a different approach. And, and thank you for that. And thank you, yes, thank you. And to the kids, I heard that the game was really fun. I'm sorry I wasn't able to make it, but.
Every Tuesday and Thursday. Hopefully, we're going through June this year. So thank you. Lines have been great. That assumes the feeling. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor. So that, at this point, I would recommend or entertain a motion to postpone this discussion for a special meeting to be determined by the town manager or chair of the board. Nice, a special meeting for the free of date or something.
While I have you all here. What's the chance for May 31st? And I might have to bump someone from this room or something.
I would make myself available.
I'll be available.
And this can be a hybrid meeting, so Zoom or it's certainly feasible, if, you know, if you, if you're confident that, based on.
We have challenge until seven.
Well, meeting would probably start seven thirty, so we can have those discussions, but.
You wanted to start at 7:15 or 7:30?
That would be, that would be fine with me. And obviously, you know, again, it'd be remote, Zoom, hybrid. So anybody can't get in right away, they can hop on while they're driving over and then switch up to here or desk. I think I can make the 31st work.
I will do my absolute best to be on Zoom. I have a conference that night. But I might be able to be in two places at once.
Certainly, I'd like to have something.
Tomorrow. Is Rick all set?
He, no, he needs more information, we're still.
Can we, can we set, can we get together?
See, I guess, I mean, my only question before we go forward, is any, any motions, I guess, at this point is, Lisa, is the 31st, would you be comfortable negotiating still throughout this week to get something back to us for the 31st?
Just have to move some meetings around on Thursday.
That would just be the main thing, is obviously, you know, we want to make sure we do this right, but we also want to.
Yeah, I'm just looking at my meetings for tomorrow. I can, you know, I can move things around so I can make it a point to be available to, if you're available tomorrow.
Yeah, I would.
And when, Thursday, but I'll also, maybe, maybe we can all get together.
Tomorrow, Thursday, I can make myself a Zoomer in person.
All right.
Whatever works for.
Charlie can be there and maybe we can.
Maybe take this offline as far as.
Yeah, I think just to, you know, kind of label some like sidebar discussions. Okay, so let's.
If I may, Mr. Chair, then do we, can we also provide you inputs with regard to some of our concerns for the, to the contract?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, you know, all of us have the opportunity to sort of address the concerns and make sure that that's taken into consideration while the, while the discussion's going on.
I'd appreciate.
Careful to wish for.
You know, I could, you would have the most recent draft from our attorney. And we could take that and then to want to redline it, blue line it, wherever it's at at this point. Yeah, then it has to get into a formal contract.
Correct.
Right now, it's in a bullets. It started out as a memorandum of intent, but I said, no, 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 this needs to be a formal contract. And we're just, and the attorney also concurred that that's how it has to be. So certainly, if you want to send me something, it would be helpful if you can. Just so I have something to discuss.
Yeah. And anyone, obviously.
Anybody, of course.
Yeah. That's been the understanding with the agreement.
Absolutely.
Yeah. All right, so then.
Is that fair? I think that's a fair thing.
But if we can meet next Tuesday, that's more than fair, absolutely.
Want to say a few $200,000 to me, I feel like, I can wait a little bit more.
No, I mean, you know, it is a good fit gesture, and, you know, we could do, you know, you know, Tuesday night, and if everyone's available, we're available. Absolutely, that's, I think that's more than fair.
And then I don't know if this is out of order, I know Dr. Willet, it's just on this call, I mean, I think, last night when I heard the board, they would like him to be here for any input, or I just think that the group went mine, the council, at least give. Dr. Willet, I'm sorry, a quick highlight, so I know you can lose wordy, which I appreciate. But I think that, I think it would be a good fit to the Board of Education that would be a part of a partner.
Yeah, Dr. Willet, if you're able to also, you know, if you want to write any additional commentary at this time, or at least be aware that, you know, we can be conveying an open invite for the special meeting, and obviously yourself, or any of our members that may be available could also attend.
I appreciate that. I think the, the board would appreciate having that opportunity. And, and they do appreciate the hard work that the council and the Miracle Field, Northern Connecticut is doing. So, you know, again, we thank you for the opportunity to be involved in that conversation. And I'll let the comments of the, the board through that communication today stand as, you know, my comments for tonight. I think it summarizes it pretty well.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Willet.
Well, Jacob spoke earlier about this concern, so I don't know.
I guess I'm concerned about opening up to having it, so every Board of Ed member's going to start talking.
Okay, that's fine.
I think that would be.
There was the, last night too, that there would be one person that would speak, you know, the board.
Yeah, I think there wasn't, at one point, intended to share information, so.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to make sure that their voice was actually heard.
Yeah, no, it's definitely been well received, I think Lisa and I, you know, she communicated information about it, and so. I'll just wait for Councilman Murray to return before we go to, well, no rush, no rush, no rush. So at this point, then, let's just bring it back to the eight point four. So I would entertain a motion that we postpone this topic to a special meeting to be held on Tuesday 31st.
I mean, seven.
At 7:15, let me say. You know, again, it can be flexible, if people are in a fear trade, you can just have some higher level information shared. And let people.
You can do it on the seal, people.
Although, I don't think the extension cord for the Apple camera will get that. So is there a motion? Which my councilman, you'd like to, or a second?
A second.
Second by Councilman Murray. Go to the discussion. Also, David, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions, I didn't hear this, so we'll be bringing this back, you know, regularly tomorrow, I'm sure. If not, hopefully, get some sleep. You know, be right back with Lee Woods this tomorrow, I continue, so we can pass something forward next week. Thank you again for coming tonight.
All right, we'll see you next Tuesday.
For all your hard work that I know does.
And if you want to come help next Tuesday before the meeting, you'd love us for it. Some conviction. If you come, you can, I promise that.
Alls I want is to be able to throw out the first ball.
All right, so move on to eight point five of my agencies on various support and commissions we do have. However, of course, it's always free doubt, they can see that TomCT.gov that email does work. Now, they're going to be worried, worried account, so if anyone has interests, check out our meeting sites. Old Business.
Sorry, there was a concern shared with the town council regarding an individual who had applied for, I think it was the person with Disabilities Commission. And we did send out an email today to that individual apologizing. Unfortunately, the committee had selected somebody. And somewhere along the way, the, we normally do send out a letter advising that someone's been selected and thanking them for their interest. And it did slip through our office and let it send out an apology to this person today. And, and I just want to publicly apologize for that, except happening. And we're trying to put procedures in place so it doesn't happen again.
It's interesting, I mean, obviously, doing the council move the last term, it's, it's a tough process, because you can't tell people when you picked, until that person's officially voted on.
Right.
Yeah, it's one of those, okay, well, we say sorry, you can't make it. They could actually make it, you know, creates a very unfortunate situation, so.
And that, that is, that's a difficulty. I mean, it's not, I mean, I think in several times that we had selections last year that was, there was difficulty. So, I mean, that, there is a, I do apologize if there's anything that came out of that. I think it's something that, you know, we've, we do the best that we can. But sometimes, there is occasions where, you know, things like that occur. But we've had it happen a few times last year as well.
I mean, it was always great to have too many people interested in lines of service, obviously, we still want to make it this, but. Yeah, we'll, we'll try and improve those processes going forward. So seeing the whole business move by like ten, just a word of the, every town manager, I don't see any updates from your meeting here. Anything new? If not, your, your brain is moving on a minute, let's just, if anyone has any questions, we'll, we'll talk to you offline.
Oh, just publicly today, but I did share with all of you, addressing one of the last things on the council goals, because I'm, I'm getting all of, you know, what we've accomplished so far together for your next meeting. I did send out letters to all of our legislative federal US senators and all. I shared copies of those letters with you, request, requesting some help on the, the water concerns, water water concerns, to see if there's anything that legislators can do to help town. It's a plea. I'm trying to see if they'll do anything. I know we have other things in the works. But I'm just trying to address that as part of my fear. The only other thing I, I would like to know is, have any of you reached out to the state regarding crumbling foundations, requesting any, any special legislation or anything besides what we've already done in the past?
No, I think the only thing, I think based off of our meeting with Jason Lawrence, when we talked about 68 crumbling foundations, I think I sent a communication about whether we could kind of share town-specific data on that crumbling foundation site. And it seems that Mr. Lawrence said that that could be done, we can show the progress, stats, figures, so people, you know, maybe come and visit town, see that that's an issue, they have, they go to that site, say, okay, this is how many homes have been fixed by the town. This is how many are currently assessed or identified, what stages they're at, basically, they're trying to work on that. That data there, so it's successful transparent for the public.
He did show me a spreadsheet, and I asked him to also provide a summary memo that you'd like to, from his website, in the crumbling foundation area on our website, to share that information. He did have a lot of that put together, and it's going to happen.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that. And if there's also a lot of data that's going to share. It's like the last five or 10 years of annual updates by the state, it's included, so there's information there. In terms of educating the public, we're, the information that we have available.
All right, so I'll at least put that bullet under that goal.
Yes.
An update.
Yeah.
And then I'll pretty much have everything.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing that adoption of the minutes. We have our May 5th budget and special meeting minutes as well. Entertaining a motion to approve those at that line of 11.1 through 11.3. So is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And to the, to the others. Correspondents to the council. I know we received a lot in the past one, or a certain number of past one.
I'm, I'm up to date as of 7:00 PM this evening. So we had a total of 36 email communications between May 11th and 7:00 PM, May 24th. 16 of those were regarding Miracle Field. There was one email regarding the town charter, one regarding the birch grove project, one regarding the birch grove athletic field condition, one regarding cross farms fields, four regarding the budget. We got an email sharing the Deep Climate Solutions newsletter. There were seven. There were seven emails regarding the town manager search, one regarding heat pumps, one regarding contaminated wells. One regarding food waste, and one regarding vacancies on boards and commissions.
I am thirteen, as chairperson report, this, this quickly update the public, we're still in deliberation and negotiations regarding the town manager search. But we're going to get very close to any official announcements probably within this week, if not next week, you know, it's still ongoing, but that's just where we're at right now. We thank everyone who came out to meet and greet, who submitted the emails, you know, I'm sure probably everybody here has received at least a few texts after the phone calls, providing input between that time. So, just want to thank everybody for their patience as we're trying to get a finalist selected. Folks who do want to, again, as, as I said, to thank our interim county to example, for all the work you've done, it's been a tremendous effort, it's kind of several months, and, you know, I think.
We're almost there.
Yeah. We owe a lot to you, and, you know.
Thank you.
You, Jack, you and Chief Captain, the community together.
Try.
In addition, obviously, there will be the parade this Sunday. I think the council and majority of members are planning to attend, I don't know, I think. We can talk of flying, but if there's anything else, who can, I think majority of council members are going to be there, so. I'll be there, and it'll be great weather. And the next chairperson's hour, I believe, is next Thursday, I like the face with, with Lisa's office, depending on if we change any meetings around or anything, I might have to reschedule for the following Thursday. But tentatively next Thursday will be the June chairperson's hour.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, no rush, we can take that offline as well. Fourteen communications and petitions from council persons. Is there any at this time? Yes.
You set thing out on the well. I'm sorry, can you highlight, I know you said you're trying to advocate more at another level, but how are we doing with the survey or any timeframe or we're going to have a second from the state? I know there's nothing even waiting on that.
We are hoping to have some information this week from the state regarding the status of the wells and the testing and all that. Our fingers crossed, hopefully we will have that this week. Regarding a survey, these. We, as I have mentioned before, until we hear back from the grant application or the loan application and, and all that information, we really can't send anything out to the public until we have a feel for what the potential costs could be. So, we really can't do anything with that just yet. We have not heard anything from the state regarding that application, and it would probably be later this year or into next year before we hear anything. The letters that I sent out today were requesting, when I, where I reached out to our state legislators, I requested for a couple of things. One was for them to give us some sort of ability to make considerations, sort of like we did with crumbling foundations, to try to give people some sort of benefit on their assessed value with stipulation. To try to get discussion rolling on maybe addressing that to maybe allow the assessor to do similar to what he did for crumbling foundations. Again, there would have to be limits in place and all that. Again, like he's saying with the crumbling foundation, to have some sort of repair forthcoming in that process. So, one part of the letter requested some consideration to discuss that at the state level. And the other part was also pleading the town, with the town's ability of being such a small town. I explained the cost just to one area of town being almost fifteen million dollars, being a substantial impact. And I was pleading for maybe some state assistance to fund the projects, not only for our area, but other areas as well. But mostly for talent to try to maybe address the situation on a statewide basis and come up with some funding to help these communities get potable water to the residents. I also reached out to our federal, our congressmen and our US senators. That was basically asking for assistance for some sort of funding for Connecticut to try to address bringing water to these residences, to provide funding for us rather than trying to depend on tax dollars and so on and so forth. So, it was my attempt to try to do something. And certainly. That, that, that's all I can offer you at this point.
No, I appreciate that, so that's another long one that's. But like someone said earlier, the government, right? It does not move that quickly. I do. Want to recognize that Board of Education did do that better together.
Yeah.
And I always specifically said one board of ed member, I think that was not because he spoke today, but I just want to make that clear. I think we should make it clear that it wasn't just one person speaking, so I just wanted to make that.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Yeah, I know, I know you mentioned Jacob, but.
Yeah, clarify that was only in regards to the May fifth meeting, and then, you know, during the, the first public participation is evening, so, no, I do want to make it clear that obviously, you know, we do get participation and recognize that there's members on this evening. I think my recommendation in speaking with Lisa is that it would be good to get it back to a point, you know, a few years ago, we used to have a board of ed member attend rotationally. I think we're going to communicate that to Dr. Will, that it would be great to have that in place, because obviously when there's communication lapses, or when minutes aren't always read, you know, things get missed. So, just improving that, that partnership between the board and council's idea, so that's just my commentary. And again, didn't mean this up on any toes, I think it's just, you hear all the social media ranting and trying to let it get to you, but it's frustrating to hear sometimes when you say, well, we weren't allowed to come there, we weren't invited, and then it seems like people, the messages were mixed, so just want to get that resolved going forward.
That's fair, I just wanted to point that out for.
Thank you, your customer.
I just wanted to thank you and John, and, and really everyone else for the very wonderful discussions we had last week regarding the town manager search. I know that we put a lot of time into those discussions, and I left that night feeling more positive about the relationships we have with each other than I had in, you know, previously. And so I wanted to thank the two of you for your leadership to facilitate that, and thank everyone around the table for those wonderful discussions.
Can't wear a mask for eleven hours, awesome.
Hey, I really appreciate not getting COVID from you, so thank you for that.
And I wasn't COVID positive Thursday, I just made that click.
Thank you everyone for, yes, as great service, and thank you for everyone being cautious and mindful. There's no other communications and petition to open the favor to public listed participation on any subject in the jurisdiction of the town council with three minutes limit. If you're on Zoom, you can begin race function, see if someone's already recognized, just remember to state your name and address for the record. And again, three minute limit on any subject for the jurisdiction of the council. With that, I see Chris iPhone, so you can state your full name.
Hi, oh, can you guys hear me? Sorry. Christine Griffin, eighty dough run. I apologize, I didn't realize, when I was trying to raise my hand earlier during the discussion about the Miracle Field, I didn't realize it didn't say my full name in Board of Ed, so I apologize for that. But I did want to speak today as FFC chairperson, specific with the emphasis on facilities. I think the May fifth meeting, I'm just going to kind of clarify, I think there was some confusion about that and whether board of ed members were actually able to speak. The agenda for either meeting that night did not have public participation on there, so I was not aware that I was allowed to actually speak. I did attend both of those meetings. So I just wanted to clarify that, that there might have been some confusion as far as the agenda items specifically. But, Mr. Jones, I do agree with your suggestion about having a board of ed liaison to the town council. I think that that would be important. And I'd like to, I will definitely be bringing that up to our chairperson, but I would also hope that anything specific to the Board of Ed that comes up at a later date, such as this, you know, field number eight. I would hope that there would be some kind of chairperson to chairperson communication via email, via phone call, you know, that I will leave between Mr. Jones and Ms. Longren. But I would hope that that would be a, something that we would reach out for. So, I was a little disappointed tonight. I don't know if the town council saw our email that Dr. Willet put together on our behalf, but I was a little disappointed that it wasn't addressed or mentioned or spoke about. So I'm hoping that in your special meeting next week, that it will actually be put out there with our suggestions. I think you guys are all aware of the unresolved issues we have with the turf field, so, at the high school. So I think that's why the Board of Ed would really like to see a contract with very specific responsibilities laid out as far as repairs, maintenance, and replacement with this field. Because that one has been a little bit of a thorn in our side for so long, so we just want to make sure that we are not going to saddle future boards with having to figure out how to, you know, fix or replace this field when the time comes. So, I know that this has been a, a very emotional discussion about the Miracle Field, but I just hope that you guys really are willing to include the Board of Ed in any discussions if it is going to be placed on school grounds. I recognize that part of it is town, it's all town property, but it really does impact the schools when students are using it. We kind of do end up getting expected to have some sort of maintenance, so I just hope that you will consider having the Board of Ed in the contract negotiations discussion as Ms. Hancock continues that with the Miracle Field. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. We did mention the document, I think it's actually probably incorporated into the minutes because it was mentioned, but, no, we did all receive it, I saw it last, I think late last night or first thing this morning, so it was mentioned, but, but no, thank you.
Alright, I would have liked it to have been read, but that's okay, I get it. Alright, thank you so much.
Of course, thank you, Christine. Dana, I assume Dana's phone is Dana Philbin, so.
Yes, it's me, um, thank you. First of all, I just want to thank everybody for the robust conversation. I know that this has been going on for a year and a half and a year and some change of, since they originally presented the Miracle Field and that entire presentation last summer, I would say. Nevertheless, I, you know, we had a, a special meeting last night, it's been a conversation on the Board of Ed's side about the Miracle Field specifically because it is on school ground. And, and I do remember when this first came to us, it was being a part of the Birch Grove Building Committee, hearing the presentation from the Lee Woods family and the Miracle Field group. Was, it was a great opportunity to, during the construction phase and, and finishing off phase, to put it on Birch Grove or town public school property. I would agree with my colleagues on the Board of Ed, it was during our conversation last night, having that contractual, you know, that contract put forth and, I'm coming in, coming into this, being fiscally responsible and responsible as a Board of Education, as well as is responsible for the town. Is, you know, many of us will, will not be on the Board of Ed or will not be on the town council, you know, in years to come, similar to like Christine said, with the turf field. Unfortunately, that has left a lot of things in the air, and I just want to make sure that if we do this, I think that the Miracle Field will be a wonderful asset to our community and our town, um, and, or any town for that matter. But I definitely think that we need to come into it appropriately and fiscally responsibly and responsibly, you know, in the nature of the town. So again, I'd reiterate the fact that the Board of Ed, we would like to be a part of that discussion. I like the idea of liaison, as previously stated. So, and I look forward to, to more discussions regarding this. So again, I do thank you, everybody, for their conversation this evening and, and over the last year plus, so thank you.
Thank you, Dana. Has there any other comments from the public? That's either star nine, or you have the raised hand function, or Bev, if you want to speak in the public, you're the only person here. Alright, go on once, going twice. Alright, you, you're part of the public.
Yeah, just for clarification, we should invite the Board of Ed to the special meeting, okay? So I will make sure that that is the case. And what I will be doing is as negotiating this contract in the next couple of days, I will share it with Dr. Willett and have him share it with the Board of Education so they can have it ahead of time to also review it. And the only other thing I wanted to mention, because again, another social media thing that's been going on, is that I have initiated a study through our engineering firm to look at all the other recreational fields in town, to try to come up with the needs to address ADA accessibility. And not sure if anything will come of it as far as the cost, but at least we will have an idea of what needs to be done. And then hopefully the next manager can move forward with something on that through the, the programs that are out there. So I just wanted the public to be aware that that is also happening.
Great, thank you. No, you're, you know, it's good, it's good to share too much.
Are you doing that study?
Not me, I'm having an engineer.
You didn't hear that you were tasked with that?
I just had a girl scout who wants to get a super award, and that's one of the things that she'd like to do, so. It's great to have that, it's, it's like participate.
Teach offline.
Yeah, yeah, sounds good. Alright, with that, I'll see you in the public participation, so I am sixteen, I entertain a motion to adjourn at twenty six PM, so move by Councilman Luba, is there a second?
I love meetings.
Alright, Councilman, you have seconds, all of in favor?
Aye.
Thank you everyone, have a great night.